Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, any opposed, unanimous. At this time, I'd like to suspend the PBD Planning Board meeting and resume the public hearing for application for Stonegate. Consulor Turco requested that this be open from the -- kept open from the last meetings. He would like to address the board.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Board, thank you very much for continuing this meeting. Unfortunately, the Thursday that you had the meeting, it was at budget hearings, so I do thank you for allowing me to speak. There's a -- you've all received my letter in regards to some concerns, excuse me, that I had with the project. A new one that I'd just like to bring up to you is in reference to City Ordinance 27.5, which is patriotic public way naming. And essentially, what that says is subdivision plan approvals and recordings are hereafter subject to patriotic public way naming requirements in multiple street subdivisions, at least one-third, one-half of newly included streets, roads, ways, courts, squares, intersections, or circles will be named in honor of resident U.S. military service persons killed in action or awarded the Medal of Honor. And this project doesn't address that. Through some brief conversation with Attorney Kelty, I'm told that possibly that list had run out, and that is why. But at the end of the ordinance, it says that the Veterans Administration can replenish that list, so I just would wonder if you would consider some name changes in honor of these fallen veterans according to 27.5. Like I said, sorry to throw that at you at the last minute, they just -- it just came up to me today. Secondly, as I said, you know, I know you've read my letter. I am in full support of the project. I think the project's a great project for the city of PBD. I think that new construction is good and beneficial to the neighborhood if done right. I just have concerns about the tight area that this is in, in proximity to Linfield Street, Bartholomew Street, and that surrounding area. My number-one concern would be access via Ralph Road. And I know you've all read it, and you've heard me speak on the issue before. I don't think that opening up Ralph Road, which historically has been a cul-de-sac of longtime PBD residents, along with Pearl, is beneficial to anybody in the ward. I think that adding that type of traffic, which will become a cut-through to Bartholomew Street, it would be a traffic nightmare. I think what you would have is side-by-side egresses off of Bartholomew. People would very quickly use their GPSs to bypass any backup on Bartholomew to cut through the condominium complexes and cut down Ralph Road and try to bypass that. You all know that Ralph Road has been an issue for years with, if it's a small amount of snow that falls, it's one of the last streets to get treated, and it's a hill, it's a very steep hill. I would just have grave concerns about traffic egressing off of Ralph Road and causing an issue for that neighborhood at that intersection. So that would be my number-one. My number-two issue would be drainage. There's a lot of flooding off Bartholomew Street. I know that the city's doing its best to slowly address some of those issues, but I think here today, we could help with that issue. I most recently met with a resident on Bartholomew Street that showed me where the drains are on that section of Bartholomew. It goes across the street into Dog Pond. I'm wondering if CONCOM has had any say into what's happening here, if there's a stormwater plan. Anything that I've heard is from Chris Mello, who, you know, I respect, but Chris Mello is a surveyor, he's not an engineer. And I would like to have the city address both stormwater management on Ralph Road, Pearl, and Bartholomew as to what the direct effect into those areas are, specifically Dog Pond. I'd hate to see -- the resident's name was Kathy Lebeau. I'd hate to see Ms. Lebeau's, the rear of her house flooded because we've added that type of runoff into her, into her storm drains. Similar to any other plan, buffer zones, I don't, I still don't know from the contractor what the buffer zones are between the residents on Pearl Road and even on Ennis. And I think that it should be addressed. And when I say "addressed," the reason why I sent you the letter is, I've heard a lot of these things addressed over the years through different projects. What I would like to see is it written down, because so many projects have come up, and more recently, and I know you don't want to hear about history, but Murphy Road, the residents were all under the impression that a fence was going to be built on the left side of Murphy Road, which is, there's no houses on that street, on that left side. They were under the impression that it was an agreement that they would get a fence. Through looking through the records, there's no written agreement that that fence is going up. So I just want to see some of these things that are discussed within your purview actually put into the plan. Through that, I mean, traffic, I would love to see that access gate, the water runoff issue through a stormwater plan, and let me go to the next one. Construction access, I have no idea where the construction access will take place. Do we really want to subject Bartholomew Street? I don't know what the right way, you guys are the experts, you know, held me out with it. Where are we going to see trucking of debris? Is it going to be through Bartholomew Street, which is already a traffic nightmare, down a small side street such as Ralph Road, a hill coming out onto Linfield Street? I have no idea where this is going to take place. There was talk of a purchase of property from the Mr. Inabel Paulino. I'm not sure how, where that stands, you can ask Mr. Kelty that. But if they do purchase it, I was told that the access will take place through that property. What that means for Bartholomew Street and traffic, I have no idea. But it doesn't sound like it's an easy fix for any of us. Water, water pressure is absolutely horrible. Through this board, several years ago, you put some conditions on the Solomini project that he had to build a water tower to, and it was originally planned 20 years ago to feed five different subdivisions, this being one of them that was originally planned way back then. Since then, that, Mr. Solomini was the only one that moved forward with the plan, so he now has a water tower that feeds 500 houses. There's currently 50 houses on that water tower. It does nothing to benefit anybody but the 50 houses that have been built. He also invested into the infrastructure of Bartholomew Street to extend from Gedney to Oak to increase the size of that waterman to 12 inches. I'd like to see this developer invest into our water infrastructure, maybe even possibly tie into that water tower so that water isn't going to waste, because it is going to waste right now. It doesn't, it feeds 50 houses, the rest of it, when that water tank needs to turn over, is wasted water, and it needs to get dumped. You've all seen the water issues that we're facing in the city of PBD. We can address some of those concerns now. We're about to vote on the city council side on a 7.5 percent water rate increase. I have to answer the residents about that. Do I also want to answer that we're dumping water that is being unused at that water tank? No, I don't. I want to say that I'm doing the best I can to tie in all of Bartholomew Street to that tank so it's usable water for everybody. Blasting, huge issue in the area, it's a tight, tight area. I truly believe that the pre-blasting surveys should include all of Ralph Road, all of Pearl, the three houses that were currently constructed, which for semantics, they weren't included in this subdivision, they're separate lots, although in reality, they are part of the subdivision. Those three houses were built, there was a lot of blasting and, excuse me, not blasting, rock crushing done, which residents say has already caused damage to their homes. I can't attest to that, I can only go by what they've told me. To that end, when real blasting starts, there will be issues beyond what the pre-blast survey site says they must do. So can we, as a courtesy to these neighbors, extend the request on that pre-blast survey and have some of these houses and residents protected? I'm told by a very knowledgeable resident on Ralph Road that there's quite a few veins of granite that run underneath Ralph Road. If you blast in that area, you're most certainly going to affect Ralph and Pearl. I would just ask that you ask the developer to address those concerns. Rodents, rats, I know you've just begun to deal with this, as we have on the council level. It's a major problem in the city of PBD and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a whole. I think that this plan should be subject to a pest management plan, in a strictly monitored pest management plan via the Health Department and Sharon Cameron. She's done great with some other projects that we have, and I think that it would help alleviate some of the current issues that we have when you clear-cut off, when the developer clear-cuts this property. Rock crushing, I know you heard this with the West PBD project. I don't know where they're going to do that. The rock crusher, I prefer, would be done off-site. I know that would add significant cost to that developer. If they could find a location onsite to do it, which is at the furthest point from some of the existing residents, and we put restrictions on the times that it's done, I just, I think that would be great for those people that live there, because I think none of us here would want to listen to the chipping of rock six or seven days a week till the wee hours. And again, it's a very tight area. Four of the houses, I'm told, today are very close to the conservation buffer area. Mr. Kelty, again, may be able to speak on that. And again, through conservation today, they just, they haven't thoroughly reviewed the project as of yet, but they seem to think that four houses on the right may be within the buffer zone coming up Ralph Road. Just something to consider. The erosion controls, and I bring up erosion controls because of what's currently happening on Gedney, and I do believe that the Solomini project is going very well, he's done a nice job there. He's had some issues with rock coming off that you guys are well aware of. If we could address that prior to it becoming an issue through a geological engineer, it's the same situation, it's all granite, it's all ledge. You're going to blast, I want to make sure that the public sidewalks are safe to those residents there. That portion of Gedney where the rocks are currently coming down, Mr. Solomini did address that small portion with a retaining wall, but I believe that you guys had to ask him for that, and I do appreciate that. But I think that situation is going to continue the further you go into the Solomini project as you go further up with ledge and expansion and contraction through the winters and summers. So if you can address it in this project, I would truly appreciate looking into that. And I will try to end very quickly here. Ralph Road, there is only one fire hydrant on Ralph Road, and I know you guys generally would address fire hydrants, but that most definitely needs to be looked at as, if you're, whatever you decide to do with the access gate, which I hope you do prevent traffic from entering through Ralph Road, but either way, there still needs to be additional fire hydrants added on that side of the project since there is only one. And lastly, and very important to me, is the inclusionary zoning, 6.11. This would come out to 3.6 affordable units that would have to be built as part of this project. I think that that number should be rounded to four, it's 3.6 technically, as we all learned in grade school, is four. And on top of that, three houses were already built, which are not included under this number. And again, semantics, you're saying 24 in one sense, but there's really 27. So I see no issue with requiring the developer to build four affordable houses where the city of PBD is struggling to reach that 10 percent goal, and it's become an issue for us on several other projects. The help of this board would be greatly appreciated. Thank you again for listening to me, and I greatly appreciate you keeping this meeting open, so thank you.
Hearing none, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition who did not speak at all in the last public hearing. Step up to the podium, name, address.
My name's Dave Eaton, 1 Redberry Lane, up in Juniper Village. Been there for 12 years. I'm not really in opposition, but there are some issues that need to be addressed before their project can continue. We have a contract to the water for the new subdivision. I think they're going to buy the contract off Mr. Cates, who we entered in contract with four or five years ago for the rights to the water from the pump house. That contract stipulates that 50 percent of the maintenance of the pump house will be paid by the new development. We have no way to collect that money because they're not a, one thing, they're 24 separate units. So I think that needs to be addressed before they can hook up to our water supply. In addition, the contract stipulates that they have to pay for the upgrades to the pump house. That issue has to be addressed before they can contact or connect the water. And those things are under contract. In addition, we could not use the PBD water supply for irrigation, so we developed two wells. The contract stipulates they cannot use that city water for irrigation, so that has to be made known to the developer if they don't, they already should know it, because I think they have read the contract, at least their lawyers have. Is that, is there any, the only other way to address the water problem is for the city of PBD, which I understand has been discussed, to take over the pump house. Is that something that can be done? Do you see our dilemma?
Mr. Kelty?
Pardon me? Oh, okay.
I said that will be addressed by different departments of the city, and it's really not in the purview of the planning board.
But do you see the dilemma we're in, the fact that we cannot collect money from 24 different units?
Again, that's off-site. If you wanted to supply us the paperwork, a copy of the contract, we can read it and have, get our recommendation on it, we do have lawyers on our board.
Are there any representatives from the development company here? You have a contract for that from Mr. Cates, right?
When you're finished, we'll invite the representative up. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Kelty?
I'll shut you ass off. I'm John Kelty, and I'm an attorney. I represent the PBD Living LLC, who is the proposed developer of the subdivision here in South PBD. What this last gentleman did testify to is, yes, a gentleman by the name of Eric Cates has an agreement, maintenance and easement whereby he could control who would be able to tie into the Juniper Ridge subdivision. We, with regard to this subdivision, will, in my estimation, either have to tie into that and deal with that contract issue. And I have been told over the years that the city of PBD, if the improvements are made to the Juniper pump station, and we utilize it in our development, that the city would take over the pump station. I believe that there has been an issue with the DEP about a pump station being a part of the public water supply that is not controlled by the Department of Public Services. So in an ideal world, we would come to an agreement with Mr. Cates, which would in turn, you know, we would make the improvements. The gentleman is right that the successor is going to have to make the improvements. We've cost, estimated all of that over a period of years. I do believe that it is in our best interest to make those improvements to that pump station. We've had, I think, two years ago or three years ago, Mr. Baker, I think we had representatives from the city of PBD water departments so that they could, you know, vet, if you will, the issues as to what the upgrades would be that would be necessary, and it is our hope we'll enter into an agreement with Mr. Cates, which would then take the burden of this pump station off of the, off of the Juniper development. So we're actively engaged, I had two conversations last week with Mr. Cates, and I've got to take that up this week, this upcoming week, so that we can get to resolution. The other thing that I want to say is that we have commissioned our blasting company, we're going to, we've entered into a contract with GZA, so you deserve a blasting impact report. You also deserve, we've entered into a contract with Bayside Engineering, which will do traffic. Rather than drag people back for all of your meetings, I know your next meet, July 12th, I don't think I'm going to have both of those reports available, so I will keep in contact with Mr. Levin so that we're, you know, keeping people posted when they need to be. My thought is that I might have both of those reports capable of being filed probably the week after the July 12th meeting, and that if we circulated them around, we could make formal presentation on August 2nd, but I can confirm that so that we're not dragging people out at every meeting. I also... Yeah, we do recognize that four of the houses, in all likelihood, need to go back to the CONCOM. We've had a, what ends identification. We are aware that at the time that there is any kind of construction permitted, that four of the houses probably need to go back to the CONCOM for an order of conditions. Water pressure, you know, pre-blast survey, all of those things. Oh, the drainage that Mr. Turco recited. We will, I need to follow up either with Drew or with Will Politz. They've said that they want to engage tie and bond. Do we need to supply a check, and if so, we will, for their review? They're going to review this water pressure issue, which is going to impact Juniper, and they're also going to review our drainage. So we just need to know whether we need to supply an escrow check for tie and bond to begin that, and I would be happy to share what I think my proposed dates when these things will come before the board. But I'm thinking it's more like August 2nd than it is July 12th.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition that did not speak in the last meeting?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Kari Richards, and I'm a resident at 7 Ralph Road. Thank you, I appreciate my notes being read into the last meeting. My husband was able to speak, and I'd like to follow up with a couple of things. First of all, speaking with Mr. Turco, some residents are embarrassed and didn't want to bring up problems that they've had. They didn't understand construction. We have rats on Ralph Road in homes. People that don't understand, don't understand that when those four lots were excavated, that's the home, those are the nests. Whether or not any remediation was done at that time, it's now a problem, so I would like that to be made record, and also, please make sure that pest management control study is done before construction begins, and that a plan is in place during construction. We joke about all the turkeys in PBD crossing Bartholomew Street, but if you look at Google Maps, there's not very much green land, it's a lot of housing developments. I think that's something that needs to be considered. Not only are we going to disturb rats and nests and things like that, rodents, but also other wildlife. There's a lot of dogs and children in the neighborhood. I know we've seen coyotes come out, we've seen other animals. I'd like some type of plan in place for all of those types of contingencies. I understand that drainage system's going to be not coming into Ralph Road's existing drainage system, but I do believe the drainage system on Ralph Road is broken and needs to be addressed. Residents on Elmwood Circle have complained, and unfortunately, we were talking, I don't know if they've understood where they should bring their complaints to, but when those two houses were built at the end of Pearl Street, that did change the water flow, and those two houses down on Elmwood Circle and behind them are now flooding. I have ten years' experience in traffic management. I worked for MassDOT starting out. South PBD's very congested. The idea that 26 houses accounts for 11 cars was very confusing at the meeting that the residents had, why only 11 cars are going to be considered as additional traffic. I think a look at the traffic really needs to be, there needs to be a deep dive into the traffic situation in South PBD before additional planning is gone, before additional developments are added in. The traffic really is congested already. That first meeting we had, it took residents 20 minutes to get from one side of PBD to the metro bowl, and that shouldn't happen. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. And John and I were discussing, just a reminder that there is the five-year roadway opening conditions in PBD, and both Ralph Road and Bartholomew Street have both recently been paved. Thank you.
My name is Lou Guerra. I've lived in Juniper for eight years. I was on the board, the HOA board, for four years. I have an issue with the gas. At the last meeting, Mr. Kelty said they're going to be using propane in the new development. We have gas fed from National Grid. My concern is the blasting and the drilling, since we all have, in those 60 units, we all have gas pipes running under our units. I wonder how, is someone going to be around to monitor? I wonder how, is someone going to be around to monitor? They will?
As I said, that's in the preview of the Fire Department of the City of Peabody. It's their decision, it's their, they review all the documentation that's given to them by the blaster, that Mr. Kelty's client hired, and they will approve the blasting, they will approve the, how they're going to do it. They'll do a pre-blast survey, they will go around to the, and see where potential damage could occur, and do restrictions to cover that. And it's not in the Planning Board preview to, to address that.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Hello, hello, hello?
233 Baughthorne Street. I have one question about city ordinance as far as ripping up a newly paved road within a five-year period unless it's an emergency. And I want to know if that is actually an ordinance or not. I don't know if anybody can answer that. Another thing I have is, is this a, is anybody here from Conservation? No? Is this a conservation issue? Does Conservation need to look at this? I have a partial complaint.
Mr. Kelty addressed that he was going to go to Concom, which is Conservation Commission, in order to get an order of conditions on that particular property.
So, that's something we don't know yet?
Yeah, we're not the Conservation Commission, we're the Planning Board.
I just asked him something. So, that's the only issue I have as far as, is that an ordinance? I don't know if that is, but that's what I heard. So, follow up on that would be, I'd be appreciate that, that'd be good.
Any questions from the Board? Hearing, hearing no questions. I'd like to close the public hearing for Seagate?
Stonegate.
Stonegate subdivision. Now, I'd like to continue with the next agenda, and Clerk will read that. It's a public hearing. New information accepted to the Board, is it necessarily a public hearing? Public is invited to all meetings.
You're disclosing this segment?
Disclosing this segment.
I, may I make just one more?
We have another public hearing that's late right now, but go ahead.
Okay. Most of us, I think, could not hear everything. This is a beautiful building, but the acoustics are terrible. So, I want to ask a general question. We're all giving our concerns, which have been repeated, but I would like to know how this process works, and how we will know what the outcome is. And will all these questions be written in the notes? And will we be informed? And when and how will be informed of the outcome?
After all the departments of the city put in their concerns on the subdivision, and after all the questions have been asked by the various departments, communication with the developer and a developer's attorney to come up with a reasonable and acceptable method in order to allow the individual who has rights to build on that land, it is zoned for that purpose. And then, each meeting of the Planning Board and the various other boards will get various documentation from the other departments, and that will be a public record. You can contact the City Planning at any time to get an agenda for the next upcoming meeting, and if that subdivision is on the meeting, you are all welcome to come and listen to what's going on. The last phase of it would be to have the Planning Board sign the plans with all the restrictions and covenants that are put on the developer, and that's when it becomes final, and allow the developer to continue his subdivision. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Notice is hereby given the City of Peabody Planning Board. The City of Peabody will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 22nd, 2018, at 7:35 PM in the Frank Woodin Auditorium, the City Hall, Peabody, 24th Wall Street, Peabody, Mass, to consider amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Peabody as follows. Be it audited by the City Council of the City of Peabody, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Peabody entitled "City of Peabody Zoning Ordinance Adopted April 28, 2011, and amended through July 18, 2017," hereby further amended as follows. By repealing the following section 6.14, entitled "Temporary Moratorium on the Sale and Distribution of Recreational Marijuana." When was this published? This was published in the Weekly News on May 20, May 31st, and on June 7th of 2018. At this time, I'd like to hear from the City of Peabody.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, in the notice, what was the date that was advertised for the hearing? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Ryder, number 10 Greenwood Road, here in Peabody, and my title is Chief of Staff to Mayor Betancourt. The mayor had hoped to be here tonight, he has a scheduling conflict. He asked me to appear tonight on his behalf and read remarks he made to the City Council last May relative to recreational marijuana. Good evening, councilors. I am here tonight to respectfully request that the City Council bring forth and ultimately pass a zoning amendment banning recreational marijuana operations in Peabody. As you know, a majority of Peabody voters opposed the 2016 referendum legalizing recreational marijuana. Also opposed were most of Massachusetts police chiefs and district attorneys, including our own police chief, Tom Griffin, and District Attorney, John Blodgett. As city leaders, I believe it is incumbent upon us to respect the apprehensions of Peabody voters, as well as local law enforcement officials who are charged with keeping us safe. Although nearly two years have passed since the referendum, there are a great many unanswered questions regarding the implementation of the new law, how it will be policed, and its effect on public health and safety. Many in the law enforcement community believe that legalizing marijuana during the current opioid epidemic is a mistake. They also believe legalization will result in a surge of marijuana impaired driving, which they see, which they say is nearly impossible to test for and extremely difficult to prosecute. Already struggling with distracted and otherwise impaired drivers, police officers believe their jobs are about to get a lot more difficult. Reviewing the final Cannabis Control Commission, or CCC, regulations relative to retail marijuana outlets, one finds no specific level of commitment from the state to help cities and towns with compliance. I'm told that CCC enforcement can be expected only after specific complaints are lodged. This means the crucial regular enforcement of purchasing age and other operation restrictions will fall largely to us, our police department, our public health department, our inspectional services department. And let me address the revenue that retail marijuana advocates point to. That revenue is going to be used not for more sidewalks, streets, better parks, schools, and infrastructure, rather it's going to be used to pay for more police officers, state-of-the-art roadside testing equipment, more SSOs in the schools, additional health inspectors to enforce 21-plus laws, et cetera. And let me also save you the suspense of wondering if the Cannabis Control Commission or additional state aid will be given to pay for these added costs. They won't. It will fall to us to find the money to pay for these things, it always does. Although I support the City Council's medical marijuana zoning ordinance, we must make a clear distinction between medicinal and retail marijuana operations. Medicinal marijuana operations are in distinct buildings, set away from neighborhoods and schools, and protected by professional security personnel. Patients require state-issued identification and a doctor's prescription to purchase the drug. Retail pot shops, on the other hand, rely on walk-in business, and will aggressively market their product to passerby, including children. We already deal with issues of corner convenience stores in Peabody displaying hookah pipes, bongs, and other smoking paraphernalia in their front windows. There are free speed protections for these stores that will necessarily be extended to pot shops, despite what the CCC regulations might say. In terms of marketing and advertising restrictions, the CCC regulations outline several, but most contain language authorizing all manners of marketing and promotion, as long as 85% of the intended audience is reasonably expected to be over the age of 21. This, of course, is ridiculous on its face. Who will be responsible for deciding which marketing campaign only reaches 15% of our children? And I believe we are kidding ourselves if we think marijuana retailers are not going to target children. Why else do they market cannabis-infused gummy bears, gummy worms, Sour Patch Chews, chocolate bites, and soft drinks? Law enforcement and health officials are very concerned about the time-release aspect of the drug in edible form. The delayed effect after consumption lulls inexperienced users into a false sense of sobriety, and often leads to overconsumption and severely impaired judgment. It is likely the marijuana-infused edibles will fall into the hands of youngsters, who may not even be aware that they are ingesting a psychoactive drug. To rationalize otherwise is irresponsible. In the midst of an opioid epidemic that has destroyed countless lives, and with the dangers young people already face online and elsewhere in a troubled world, what message are we sending to the most impressionable members of our community? Our kids. It's not easy being a kid nowadays, the pressures are immense. We, as a community, have invested heavily in providing treatment options, counseling, and providing a helping hand to children in Peabody who are struggling the most. The student-based health center at Peabody High School has been a godsend, helping us to identify and support those students most at risk. Our Healthy Peabody Collaborative offers wonderful programs designed to encourage young people to make better choices for their lives. In the past six years, you and I have worked together to invest in Peabody and make it a more desirable place for families. We built the beautiful new Higgins Middle School, we've modernized our aging infrastructure, we've strengthened public safety, improved our parks and open spaces, and worked to attract economic development downtown. I think we all agree these investments are paying off, and that Peabody is on the rise. When we think of some of the nearby cities and towns known for making similar investment in education, public safety, economic development, and quality of life, I am impressed by how many of those municipalities have a recreational marijuana ban in place. Cities and towns like Danvers, Burlington, Woburn, Weston, Lexington, Hamilton, North Reading, Bedford, North Andover, Milton. This is a defining moment. What type of city do we want to be? Let me say in closing, I've been mayor for over six years now. I love the job, and I hope to continue doing it for some time. But whether I'm mayor for six years or 26 years, whether you've been a city councillor for five months or 30 years, this is a decision which will affect the character and direction of our community for many years to come. This is one of those defining moments. Is this what we want for our community? The answer to me is a clear and resounding no. Our residents deserve better, our families deserve better, Peabody deserves better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of... This is in favor of the repeal. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Now you can come up.
My name is Kathy Hotney, I'm a registered nurse, I live at 25 Cooler Jav in Peabody. Should I move it up a little? Okay, that's good. I'd like to speak a little bit about what was just said. I know when it was said the last time, the mayor had said that he feels that this would cause a great detriment to the City of Peabody. I have to say, I fully disagree with that. I have a magazine here which talks about the history of marijuana, and it goes back to like, I don't know, 35,000 years ago, to way beyond when this country was even made. One of the other things that he talked about was marketing to children. I don't think that's a fair thing to say. I know that the Cannabis Commission requires that windows are blocked, that you cannot see inside the store. When you drive down Main Street now, there are stores that have bongs and different things in their windows, and they're called smoke shops. I don't believe that this would be with a cannabis store. I also have a magazine here from the American Cannabis Nurses Association, which I am a member of, and it talks about how in 1990, they first discovered the endocannabinoid system, which is a system in the body that works the same as using, I can hear myself echoing, sorry, that uses the marijuana. And it provides the ability to relax, eat, sleep, forget, and protect. And that's what the brain does, and that's what the endocannabinoid system does in the body. When you start, when people are using marijuana, they're using it for withdrawal symptoms from opiates. When people are going through withdrawal from opiates, they have, they shake, they have massive diarrhea, they have uncontrollable movements, they're sick, they're vomiting, they're nauseous, and they're using the cannabis to stop those treatments. This is how to treat opiate dependency, using cannabis. This is from the American Nurses Association with Cannabis Nursing. It also talks about how in 1999, the American, I think it's the American Medical Association, stated that cannabis is not a gateway drug. And I know that a few people have said that it's a gateway drug. It is not. The gateway into using drugs comes from the society that the, that the children are growing up in. Are the families using drugs in the home, are the parents using drugs? You have to look at that. You have to look at how the child is raised. And if you're going to put it into the community, you need to, that also needs to be addressed. Because children do what they see. So, if you're doing, if you're drinking alcohol in front of children, when people come over to your house for a party, or they come over for a holiday dinner, you offer them a glass of wine. You sit down and you have a glass of wine, or maybe you have a cocktail, and... You sit down and you have a glass of wine, or maybe you have a cocktail, and children see that. But alcohol has no positive effect on the human body. It causes Korsakoff syndrome, which is a brain disorder, causes liver disease, causes pancreatic disease, causes multiple disorders. There is no positive effect. Cannabis has a multitude of positive effects. People use it when they have cancer. They use it to control the nausea from the chemotherapy. They are also using cannabis to cure cancer. They also use it for psychiatric illnesses. They use it for depression. They use it for anxiety. They use it for other, yes? I understand that. But one of the things that I'm trying to prove is that cannabis has a positive effect on the human body. Before 1936, when they started the whole REFA madness thing in the United States, people, doctors were prescribing it. It was listed in the pharmacopoeia, so they were able to prescribe the cannabis. If people would rather go home and have a couple of cocktails at night instead of, and some people would go home and maybe they feel like eating a cannabis-laced cookie, or they want to have something else that's an edible, or maybe some people would prefer to smoke instead of drinking. When people are drinking alcohol, they get, they fall down, they slur their words, all of those side effects happen. When people smoke cannabis, that doesn't happen to people. And the research that they're doing with cannabis now is very new. It's still in its infancy. And there's also, and to speak about money as far as zoning, and I think the recreational use is for the adult person to be able to make that choice. Medicinally speaking, I think it's, I think there are a lot of pros to it. And I know before 1936, before this was, before they banned this and they made it a Schedule I drug, which is a highly, ah, that's a word, it's highly addictive with no positive effect. So heroin is a highly addictive drug, and there are no positive effects on the body. Cannabis has positive effects on the body. But if you'd like to speak about some money, New York City, this is Newsweek magazine that has, that came out, Newsweek, and they said, "According to the 2018 Cannabis Price Index, the U.S. city with the most gain financially legalizing cannabis is New York. Based on an average cannabis tax rate, New York City would see an extra $156.4 million a year." So if we're 5% of the size of New York City, that's almost 7 million, that's over $7 million, like $7.8 million. I think that could pay for the extra police and the other things that, that was stated. 53,000. So what percentage? Okay, so, so 1%? Okay. Okay, so 1% would be about 700 or 800,000? Okay, well, I guess I figured that wrong. So does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask? No, no.
Mr. Chairman, I have comments, but I don't know if you want to wait until your asked board for, you know, comments.
Okay. I spoke in favor.
I did announce that first. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal to ban recreational marijuana, and not one person? Ma'am, would you like to, would you like to speak in favor of this?
I don't want to speak in favor. I'd like to speak against it.
He's letting you speak in favor of the ban. You're in favor of recreational marijuana in the city. If you're speaking against it, you're in favor of recreational marijuana in the city. That's what I said. Are you wishing to? You wish to speak in favor of this proposal? This proposal is to ban recreational marijuana in the city of Peabody.
Okay. My name is Alexandra Giorgione. I live on Harrison Avenue West, Peabody. I don't have anything prepared, but I do have a lot of strong feelings on this. We all voted, you know, Peabody overwhelmingly voted before to, to ban this, and I, and I think it's a good thing. I mean, the woman that previously spoke, to me, everything on what she had to say was in favor of, of medical marijuana. Yes, medical marijuana does have good components to it. It, you know, people with cancer and all that stuff, but, you know, also, like, my brother's a physician, and, you know, in other places where, you know, marijuana is legal, whether for recreation or for medical purposes, all of a sudden, a lot of people end up with glaucoma, and illnesses, and pain, and things that they need to take marijuana for. And there's really no way to control that, because you get a doctor's note, you get a doctor's note. How many people get doctor's notes from several different doctors for opioid prescriptions? It happens all the time. So, I mean, that's, that's a whole aspect, but then the whole recreational thing, you know, it is going to get to kids, because if people, if kids, teenagers and middle school kids see their parents eating edibles on the weekend, or smoking in the backyard around the fire pit, they're going to think, well, this is a good thing, and they're going to want to do it, because, you know, it's a good thing, it's legal, we can do it, my parents are doing it. How many underage kids get alcohol? It happens all the time. Underage kids will get, you know, marijuana. It's, it's going to happen. And then what about, you know, all the people coming to Peabody from all the towns that have it banned? You know, we're going to get all this traffic in from, and I'm not talking traffic like vehicle traffic, I'm talking people traffic, coming from all kinds of other places, cities and towns, that have it banned, and they're going to come here and they're going to want to get it, because there are stores all over the place and they can get it. When they come here and they use it, they're not going to take it and leave and go wherever they, they live or where they came from. They're going to stay here and they're going to use it. And we don't know the effects of what's going to happen to them. When they get behind a car, you know, they, they could go to an establishment and start drinking, and now they've already smoked or eaten something. Who knows what's going to happen to them? Who knows what other kind of medications they're taking, or whatever else they're doing that's going to react? And now they're going to be in our city causing problems, our police, our citizens, the kids on the street. This is going to be like a huge, you know, just a jumble of all kinds of, like, unsavory kind of things that, that I don't think Peabody really wants. I mean, you know, we're working really hard to get the downtown going, bring good businesses up here. We want, you know, people to come to Peabody. We want it to be a nice place. We want a nice downtown. We're beautifying it with the traffic and the trees, and, you know, we want to attract better businesses, and now we want to bring in pot shops? It's like, what's that going to attract? You know, that, if you look at the towns and the cities that have banned it, what do their downtowns look like? You know, a lot of them are towns and they're not cities, but, you know, what do they look like? You know, we should be emulating, Peabody should be emulating itself towards the towns that, like, we want to be, the nice downtowns like Melrose and Middleton. You know, it's like, I, I just think that, that having recreational marijuana is, is not a good thing. One, we voted against it, and like I said, I don't even want the medical marijuana here. I mean, you know, if, if people need it, let them go someplace else and get it, and, you know, and let them use it in their house, because if it's here, if it's in Peabody, medical or recreational, everyone that wants it is going to get it, just like everybody that wants pills are going to get pills. It happens all the time. People underage that want alcohol, they get it. Even if you go, like, people that aren't supposed to drive because they have too many DUIs, somehow they're driving, and nothing ever happens, you know, you don't hear about it until they get in the news because they killed somebody, or they got into an accident. But people that aren't supposed to do things get access to things all the time. And the people that aren't supposed to do things, the things that they're not supposed to do, are usually not good things, and they end up doing them anyway, and they cause harm to people. And, you know, I don't think that the people of Peabody, you know, want that happening. We don't want to be in the news every night for something bad. We want to be on the news for good things. We don't want to be on the news, you know, for bad things. And, and that's just my thought.
I'm sorry for the confusion in the beginning, that the people didn't understand that this is to make recreational marijuana banned in the city of Peabody. So if you're speaking in favor of that ban, that's speaking in favor. If you're speaking in opposition to that ban, that is opposition. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, we'll go back to opposition.
Hi, my name is Wayne Lee, and I live up on 156 Lowell Street. Now, as far as recreational goes, or, or otherwise, any substance that alters the brain is a drug, plain and simple. Yes, I am for recreational marijuana. Yes, I am for that. But we're also talking about adults. We're not talking about kids going into a shop. There should be mandatory age limits, 21, that's the standard age limit, but in the military, it's 18. So, you know, that, that's on you people. If I were to smoke, and I don't, but if I were to smoke, where would I get it? I'd get it off the street. Do I know what's in it? I'm just assuming it's marijuana. Could be laced with angel dust, it could be laced with other ingredients. You pick up a cigarette for the first time, and you smoke it, you're going to get dizzy, because there's, there is formaldehyde in it, there is all these other drugs in cigarettes that cause the brain to get fuzzy. So all these other cities and towns that, that have approved it, are making, you know, it's a trillion-dollar business. So I think the city can benefit from it, but again, you know, it's age-appropriate, you know, you need to, we should handle it like we would alcohol. And that's, you know, that's basically all I'm saying, you know, it's, you know, you can sell whatever grade you want, but you know, when you go into a shop, you know you're going to get just marijuana. My first friend to die from, from an overdose, I was 16 years old. I'm 62 now. That never left my head. So I know that marijuana in itself is not a gateway drug. It's just a pleasure drug. That's all it is. And if it's recreational, that's one thing. If you're driving while you're smoking, that's wrong too, because it alters your brain. Thank you much.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Dr. Nigam Aurora. I'm here in support of Kathy. She invited me to come here and speak to you guys. So I'll just give you a really brief background of myself, so you can see where I'm coming from before I share my comments. So my background is in chemistry. I hold a PhD in organic and analytical, analytical chemistry from Purdue University. I graduated in 2016. We were number one in the nation in analytical chemistry that year. I currently work for, after that, I pursued a executive MBA in healthcare innovation, so I'm also very up to date on what's happening in healthcare in Massachusetts as well. I currently work for a company called Cannabis Community Care and Research Network. We are one of the leading research firms, if not the leading research firm, in cannabis in Massachusetts. Kathy asked me here to speak about some of the things that C3 is working on, and some of the things that we believe. I would encourage all of you to look us up. Once again, it is Cannabis Community Care and Research Network. We have academic papers that we have authored on our website about other towns, such as Holyoke, such as Lawrence. This is different than Peabody, obviously, but a lot of academic literature, a lot of references that we've written about why cannabis is helpful for towns economically, medically, recreationally, adult use. Anyways, so at C3, we concentrate on advocacy, research, and education related to medical cannabis, as well as adult-use cannabis. So my job there is chief scientific officer, so I am day by day by day very involved in what is going on with the plant, what is going on with the medicine, what is going on with the adult use, and what is going on in people's bodies and brains when they consume it. This is my wheelhouse, so you can see why Kathy brought me here to talk to you guys. A few things I should say, just a caveat, before I go into a couple more details. One is that the argument comes up a lot, well, you already have medical, why do you need rec? Well, the thing about rec is that it provides access, so often there's people who can benefit from medical cannabis. It's estimated there are 611,000 people in Massachusetts, so basically a tenth of our population can benefit from medical cannabis. Now, that number is based on people with conditions that qualify for the original 14, if you don't count things that change quality of life, where we have a lot of other conditions coming in. So how do these people learn about cannabis? How do these people learn that cannabis is not bad? That cannabis is not a street drug? That cannabis is not alcohol? And that's one of my other comments, that I know what the law said, regulate cannabis as alcohol. I appreciate that the law was passed and allowed cannabis to come up in Massachusetts, but that's kind of a silly way to think about it, because cannabis and alcohol are dissimilar. Alcohol is poison outright. I don't think anyone can really argue about that. It is great, ethanol, it will kill you if you drink too much. Pills, opioids, benzodiazepines, how different are they? People are dying every day in Massachusetts from that, so, and I'm kind of getting on a tangent here, but also, now that I've said all that, cannabis is not a gateway drug. Cannabis is an exit drug. I would like to introduce each and everyone here who doesn't believe that to a book written by my colleague and friend, Dr. Lester, or Dr. Peter Grinspoon, son of Dr. Lester Grinspoon, who was one of the grandfathers of cannabis research. And, and I, I could share with you guys endless papers, endless stories. I can introduce you to endless people who believe exactly what I'm saying, and many of these people are on the cutting edge of cannabis science and healthcare in America. And internationally, this opinion is shared in Israel, where medical cannabis is legal nationwide. This is shared in Canada, where medical cannabis has been nationwide for like, almost a decade, and rec is coming in October now. So back to some of the main points that I wanted to share with you guys tonight. Rec is important for access, so of the 600, so if you only believe in medicine, we've got 46,000 patients registered in Massachusetts. There's 611,000 people who could benefit. So if only, if having rec shops in Peabody lets people access clean, safe cannabis and to explore it and to understand the efficacy it has for stress, like some people use alcohol for, for sleep, like people use all kinds of stuff for, for recreation, like you might use alcohol for. I see why they wrote it like that in the law, although I explained why I disagree. So the point is, we start with access. Okay, after access, people can understand, once you Once you understand, and no offense, when people think cannabis is bad, to me, that is a misunderstanding. It displays a level of ignorance. Because cannabis is not bad. It is relevant in society, both adult use and medically. So, access is extremely important. So once you have the access, you can learn. Once you learn, you can gain kind of a deep understanding. Once you gain a deep understanding, you can begin to judge something. So, how can people in Massachusetts get to the point where they can decide, is cannabis good, is cannabis bad? Do I want to use cannabis as medicine versus pills versus opioids? Do I want to educate my children about cannabis? How do you educate children about cannabis in the year 2018 when it's becoming similar to alcohol, which you must educate your children about anyway? Right? So I could say it 100 times with this microphone, access is important. Access in PBD will allow the money from that access to stay in PBD. Obviously, I don't need to explain that to you. Some other points. You know, I'm up here representing cannabis very positively. I believe in it deeply, as does my company. But there's some things that are important that nobody can avoid. Child safety, driving safety. Nobody's arguing about that. But I'd like to mention, people text on their cellphones and crash their cars in Massachusetts every day. People drink alcohol and crash their cars in Massachusetts every day. We already have measures in place for these kind of things. We already have highly-trained police forces and, you know, sheriff's forces who know how to spot and deal with impaired drivers. We shouldn't let cannabis scare us on this front. It's something that's happening. You can't turn it back. The tide is not turning. Children in PBD are going to have to learn about cannabis. So let's keep them safe and let's do it at home. Let's raise them up in their own community in the right way. So I have to touch on this again about the opioid crisis. It's silly to me to think that taking a pill that kills people every day is worse than exploring cannabis as an option. I already mentioned to you my colleague's book. Once again, Peter Grin spoon. He's a doctor at MGH right now. He's doing well. I could talk about that all day, but alcohol, opioids, and benzodiazepines are all more harmful in killing more Americans and more Massachusetts residents than cannabis ever will. Caveat, cannabis never killed a single person, ever. Ever. Yeah, and in a lot of states, we've seen, like Colorado, there's papers. If anyone's interested, I'll give you my card. I'll send you the paper later tonight about the reduction in opioid deaths in states where cannabis has been legal medically, when someone has a choice. And I don't know if it's happened to any of you guys, but you get a minor surgery and the doctor fills you up with opioids and it's a long spiral down. I think we've all known people involved in that. And I'll like to look at each and every one of you and say that cannabis can save lives. It is saving lives. My company is part of this movement. And believing anything else is backwards, in my opinion. Yeah, so those are the major points I'd like to make. I would encourage any of you guys to reach out to my company or to myself for any further questions about the science related to this plant and to what is already known in other states about safety, about saving people's lives, all that kind of stuff. So thanks for listening and please do reach out to me with any further questions.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Rita Covickio. I live at 25 Emerson Street, which is Ward Four. I grew up in PBD. And when I had the opportunity, I moved here in 1999. I've been here almost 20 years. I am a single mother of a child that is 12 and also has autism. I myself am disabled and also have autism. I have been under the care of a doctor since I was in my teens. I always listened to what my doctors had to say. And I took the medications that they prescribed me. I took them for decades. They didn't solve my problem. I was on five medications, four of which were Class I or what are called black box drugs. With the aid of marijuana, I have managed to eliminate all five of those drugs from my daily regimen. I am a medical marijuana patient and my life is better for that. I understand that this argument is about recreational marijuana. But I do want to point out something. When I decided that I wanted to be off these very dangerous drugs, I went to my doctors. These are doctors I've had for years. And not one of those doctors knew how to help me get off the medications and using marijuana. They all just put their hands in the air and said, you know, the best thing is for you to stay on those medications. I'm sorry, but I know my own body. And I know after years of taking Ritalin, taking Effexor, taking Klonopin, these are very dangerous drugs. They're not something you want to be on for decades. And my doctors, because of the federal law, were unable to help me. Thankfully, I am an educated woman and I could go and research this whole issue for me. I reached out to doctors that could help me prescribe. And to speak to the woman who said that we can get doctor's notes, it's impossible. You can't just go to any doctor and get a doctor's note. I'll tell you, because I did it. I went to five doctors and all five doctors had nothing, nothing to offer me. Okay? I had to go to a special doctor. I paid $250 for a one-year license to get medical marijuana. $250 just for the right to purchase medical marijuana. Now, I've seen this incredible improvement in myself. And I am, I tell everyone, I'm a changed person. I'm able to stand here tonight and speak to you where I never would have done this before. I'm able to leave my house on a regular basis. I'm able to be a parent to my son. And it's because of the fact that I have been able to get off of these medications and on medical marijuana. But what about the elderly? What about the other disabled people who can't afford $250 a year for the license to purchase medical marijuana? Is there any help for them? No. No, there isn't. When you go to a medical marijuana dispensary, you pay and you pay through the nose. What I got for pennies on the dollar from the pharmaceutical companies, I have to pay over $3 a day for the medication that I take with marijuana. I used to get this stuff for practically free from a doctor. There's something wrong there. There's something seriously wrong with this system. And I'm concerned about veterans. I'm concerned about the elderly. I'm concerned about any marginalized person that could reap the benefits of marijuana if a recreational development or establishment was established. Because this will give them the opportunity to try it. And I guarantee you, trying it and being open to trying something that, you know, to get you off of drugs that basically have a, they're not opioids, but they're dangerous drugs. And it's a serious problem. How many of our elderly just take the medications that are prescribed to them? And they, you know, the doctor says, no, it's fine, it's fine. We've all seen those commercials on TV. Oh, I have eczema, I have psoriasis. You know, and then they tell you, do not take this drug because of this, 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 and this. Well, I'm sorry, but those are scary commercials. We need to stop and listen and open our minds to an alternative. An alternative to better health, a better way of life. And by having recreational, it will bring more money into the city. Now, you know, how much, that's debatable. And there are people, for instance, the Denver mayor has, you know, has come out and said, you know, it's way more than we thought. And he was against it. And I'll tell you another thing. When this was put into law in 2016, I actually voted against it. But now, today, two years later, I'm standing here as one of the biggest proponents of cannabis. So, at the very least, before you make a decision, listen to what these people are saying. There's a benefit to our community. There's a benefit to the people, the citizens, including the veterans, including elderly, and, you know, including people who are disabled. Those are people that are citizens in your community. And they really should be heard. So, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
If there's nobody else wishing to speak, I can open this up to the board for questionings and statements. Right now, I'll take comments or statements from the board.
I have a few comments. You know, we've heard a lot about, you know, medical marijuana and how it's all good. You know, it's good for a number of reasons. You know, that may be the good side of marijuana. There's also a dark side, the bad side. My background is I'm retired from the State Department of Corrections. I worked in the state prisons for over 20 years. I was a lieutenant, I was a program manager, I was a unit manager. Among other things, I worked in the men's prison for many years. I worked in the women's prison for many years. I worked mental health wards for the crimely insane, for the females for five years. So I have an extended background with inmates. And also dealing with substance abuse in the prison population. And I can tell you that the vast majority of inmates who've gone on to do other drugs, committed a lot of crimes and have been in and out of prison for many years, one of the initial drugs was marijuana. Marijuana is a drug. It alters, it alters up here. You know, they say, well, there's a difference between alcohol and, you know, opiates and marijuana. Well, you know what? It impairs you. And to say that, and for someone educated to say that no one has died from smoking marijuana is incorrect. Marijuana stays in your system for 30 days. I know. I tested marijuana for over 20 years on inmates through urine samples. And a urine sample, as well as a blood test, anybody in the medical profession will tell you it stays in for at least 30 days. And when you smoke marijuana, there is really no instant test to say whether you're under the influence of marijuana or not. So yeah, you can smoke a joint, or you can smoke 10 joints, and then you can drive a car a couple hours later. Well, you know what? You may or may not be impaired, but there's no way of telling. Unless you run over a little kid. Because you're, you know, you're relaxed and you're not paying attention. You're out there and you're looking at butterflies or whatever. So, you know, marijuana, you know, you know, what I'm hearing is medical marijuana, it's got all this positive feedback. That's wonderful. I believe in, I believe in that. It's just, you know, again, it's just to say that marijuana is, you know, it's not, it's not bad for the community. I think it is. The only thing I've heard positive as far as the recreational marijuana, in between all of the healthcare and medical marijuana issues, the part of issues that I've heard, is that the city of PBD can make a ton of money. They can make millions of dollars. Well, you know what? You can keep your money. Because sometimes you don't do things for the money. And I bet everyone here has had it one time or another in their lives where they could have made a little extra money. But you know what? It didn't seem right. It didn't, you know, you just had a bad feeling. Well, I have a bad feeling about this marijuana thing. And I think the marijuana, what's before us today, the ban, should be approved.
So I've heard a lot about medicinal marijuana, which, you know, is packaged differently. It's processed differently. It's distributed differently than recreational marijuana. I want to hit on first the financial benefits. As the mayor pointed out in his comments to the city council, there are very few financial benefits of recreational marijuana for the city. We're going to end up having to pay more money for police, as was pointed out by the mayor. My background, I represent adolescents who are addicted to marijuana. It's basically ruined their lives. They've had people use marijuana to sexually exploit them as they're human trafficked. So, for me, I think I don't want PBD, the place where I've lived for my entire life, to be the place that normalizes recreational marijuana for adolescents and young adults. I'm not an expert, but it's my understanding that the adolescent brain doesn't fully develop into an adult brain till about age 26. Marijuana can affect the development of the adolescent brain negatively. Again, I have clients who are absolutely addicted to this drug. I also have a background in prosecuting OUI cases. And the cases where people are under the influence of marijuana were far worse than the cases with people who are under the influence of alcohol. And those were bad. Marijuana makes you react a lot slower than even alcohol does. So again, medical marijuana is different. Again, packaged differently, marketed differently, distributed differently. Again, I don't think PBD should be the place that sends a message to adolescents that recreational marijuana is normal.
Yeah, most of the reasons offered tonight, why the ban should be, why it's opposed, have to do with the medicinal benefits of marijuana. And I think the argument that access is a good thing, it holds some water with me. But I don't think we can allow access at the expense of just kind of opening the door to all kinds of recreational uses and the unknowns that that, you know, brings about. If it's that difficult, if you need medical marijuana to get it, I think, and I can't do anything about it because I don't think we can, the answer has to come with making it easier for people who really need it to get it, rather than have to pay $250 for a one-year license. That's where I think the access can be opened up to those who really need it, those who don't have the money, might be able to obtain waivers or things like that. And of course, the medical community, to the extent it's not already aware of the medicinal benefits for any particular patient or the population at large, needs to be educated if it's not. And I'm kind of doubtful that doctors don't know about the benefits, even though I've heard some arguments that they don't. And it just seems to me that the medicinal benefits, they're certainly real. And I believe in them and I think everybody else here does. But if we need it... in them, and I think everybody else here does. But if we need to provide access to those who need it, it's to make it easier for them, rather than to make it easy for anybody to walk down the street and purchase marijuana.
I've given this quite a bit of thought, quite a bit, and when you have trouble making a decision, you usually make a list of pros and cons. There was very few pros and more cons, but the largest list is the unknowns. How strong is it? How do you buy it? How was it packaged? What's the threshold for being under the influence? Can you smoke it around kids? And there's rules that the state needs to make and put in place. There's rules that the registry needs to put in place, and there's certainly rules that need to be put in place at the local level. And I'm going to support this proposed zoning change myself. I think it's best to err on the side of caution.
And I'd also like to add that I have adult clients who have lost their children to the state because they've been under the influence of marijuana instead of taking care of their children. Recreational marijuana. Again, I'm making a distinction between recreational and medicinal, but I have adult clients who have lost their children because they have not cared for their children while under the influence of marijuana.
Mr. Chairman, I did too want to just say that I sat here tonight with an open mind and waited for some direct, specific examples of why recreational marijuana and the benefits of that. And I did hear a lot of benefits to the medicinal, but I did not hear a lot of specific pros to recreational. So, I did want to say that I was sitting here waiting for it, but I didn't. And I didn't hear enough specifics from the doctor, and I was hoping he stayed because I had questions about the, about, basically, the comparison of being impaired with cannabis and driving an automobile to being impaired and the laws that surround being impaired by alcohol. So, I was looking forward to hearing that comparison, and I didn't. So, I too felt like I just did not hear any pros for the night. So, that's my position.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend to the city council that they adopt the amendment to the zoning ordinance prohibiting recreational marijuana. Mr. Chairman, move to send a letter to Mr. Croupy for his attendance at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Do I have a second on that motion? Second, Dr. Otto. All those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Okay, you want to present your planning report?
There's no real presentation of the, the planning report's kind of just for everyone else's personal knowledge of what's happening, the planning boards are just for tonight.
Other matters properly before the board? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'd like to see Mr. Croupy come in here and talk to us. I mean, quite frankly, I think that schedule is kind of a joke. It's, the entirety of the schedule is about 14 words. The entire site is cleared. I don't think there's any activity up there since he cleared it, and I think he should come in and give us an update. What does he plan to do?
That's what the request is.
All those that has been requested?
We request him to come to our next meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Just for the record, I went up there too. The site is cleared, and according to his schedule, he is within his projected schedule. The site's cleared. He's going to do pipe work in June, July. We're still in the middle of June, so he's not getting a box of pancake batter, mixing it up, and pouring out a subdivision, so.
Well, I understand. I've been involved in construction for a good portion of my life, and a site that sits idle.
The site, the site is quiet.
It's more than quiet. It's dormant. Right. So, why aren't there people out there doing stuff to expedite and get the thing built?
You can ask Mr. Croupy.
Second.